Okay, we're gonna get started now. We have a... Okay. Okay, can I have a little quiet, please? We're gonna get started. We want to make sure we can accommodate the mayor's address. All right, we've established our quora. I'd like to welcome everybody to give our invocation this morning. The chair recognizes the Reverend Michelle Ann Simmons of Why Not Prosper Incorporated. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all guests, members, and visitors, please rise.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm so grateful and honored and have much appreciation for Councilmember Bass for asking me to come do the invocation, and I am so grateful to be here to do it. Let us look to the Lord in prayer. Dear Father God, we come to you this morning by all the names that you know and call. Give me your name, glory, honor, and total praise. We come right now in this moment just appreciating you for being our strength, for being our balance, for being the way. We come confessing right now, God, that sometimes I just go through life so fast and I don't really pay you any attention. I come right now in this moment, God, just confessing that that doesn't really serve me well. I come in this right now moment, God, just confessing that I do belong to you and we belong to you. I come confessing right now, God, that without your hand and your grace and your mercy upon our work on our hearts and our minds, God, that we're just running amok. So in this right now moment, God, we just come thanking you for this day you've made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. You say how great it is when brethren come together in unity. And so on this day, God, we're inviting you into this council meeting. We're inviting you into our city at large. We're lifting up our leaders, our council people, our commissioners, God, and all of our elected officials. God, we're praying even now, right now, for the election at hand. We pray that your will be done. We pray, God, that you will choose who will be our next elected officials in the leadership of this city. God, we ask that you bless our outgoing president. We ask that you bless the new mayor coming in. We ask that you bless the new judges. Father God, we need you right now to come and just do a work in the city of Philadelphia. We have made many strides, and we are on our way, God, but still, we're standing in the need of prayer. So on this day right here, before we had this meeting and before we had a mayor's budget speech, we ask that you go first, God, and you figure out it all. And then, God, give us our assignments and let us walk out our assignments. For God, we pray right now that we just be able to move egos to the side and distinction so that love and joy and unity and cohesion can reign. We know you could do it, God. We thank you for it now. We ask you bless us all, keep us all, as we all work for the betterment of our city and for our lives and for our families. We thank you, and we know that the prayer that we just prayed is already done. It's in your name we pray with thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much, Reverend. We really appreciate you being here. Council would be at ease. Thank you. And Reverend, again, thank you so much for your spiritual guidance today. We really appreciate it. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize State Representative Morgan Cephas, Philadelphia Here, you all did some historical things the other day. Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it in a different capacity. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 23rd, 2023, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 23rd, 2023 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second. That's the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 23rd, 2023 stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those approve? Those oppose? Ayes have it. And that Journal was approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, there is a request for leave of absence from Member Vaughn.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Leave shall be granted to Councilmember Vaughn. And at this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Schweller for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of the council session today that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilman Schweller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and is required by law subsequently published on the amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or a resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible action by council that arose too late to be included in the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the legislative matters stated by Councilman Schweller may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this council session. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carried. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the many distinguished visitors, other than Representative Morgan Cephas. But thank you all for being here today. We really appreciate your being here to see how your money is going to be spent. That is one of the most important things that this legislative body can do, is to appropriate dollars in the way that's most meaningful to move the agenda forward, particularly for the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. So I would like to thank you so much for being here. At this time, our next order of business is communication, and I would ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other messages that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 1, 2023, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on February 16, 2023, and that I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on February 23, 2023. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution providing for the approval of the council of the city of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the city of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2024 through 2028 and incorporating revised changes with respect to fiscal year 2023, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, and in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2024 through 2029 inclusive, and in ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2024 capital budget, and in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2024, and in ordinance amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates, and in ordinance amending Chapter 192800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority Tax on Wages and Net Profits to provide for the continuation of the tax and to make other conforming changes, and in ordinance amending Chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by revising certain tax rates, and in ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2023 from the General Fund and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund, the Hotel Room Rental Tax Fund, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the title of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers two resolutions. A privileged resolution recognizing and supporting the accomplishments of women and girls throughout history on the occasion of Women's History Month.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Representative Joanna E. McClinton Esquire on her historic election as the first Black woman and first woman speaker of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Council President and colleagues. And in the presence of our chair of the Philadelphia delegation, State Representative Morgan Cephas, it is my absolute honor and privilege to introduce today's resolution honoring my friend, daughter of southwest Philadelphia, lawyer, minister, glass-shattering, history-making, first woman and first Black woman to serve as the speaker of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives, our representative Joanna Elizabeth McClinton Esquire.[741.12][741.12](APPLAUSE). Speaker McClinton is no stranger to shattering glass ceilings. In fact, is what she does best. In 2018, she became the first woman and first African-American elected to serve as House Democratic Caucus Chair. Two years later, she made history yet again by becoming the first woman-elected Democratic leader of our state legislature. And just last month, she became Pennsylvania's first female majority leader. Since 2015, Speaker McClinton has served as a strong advocate, not only for the 191st Legislative District, but on behalf of all Pennsylvanians. Her journey to public service started long before she took elected office. As an attorney, she brought her talents to the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, the Defender Association of Philadelphia, and later as chief counsel to State Senator Anthony Hardy Williams. I actually first met Rep. McClinton during her days as a student at La Salle University in Councilmember Bass's district. In addition to all that she has accomplished, I am truly excited about what this means for our great city. We know there is much work to do, and working with our partners in Harrisburg, including our new appropriations chair, Representative Jordan Harris, I know that we will get the job done. So colleagues, please join me and my colleague, Councilmember Jamie Gaudier, who co-introduced this resolution with me, in congratulating State Representative Joanna Elizabeth McClinton Esquire, the first woman to serve as speaker of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives. Not only is this momentous occasion good for all of us, it is good for our city and the contribution she has made towards creating a brighter and more equitable future for all Pennsylvanians. We thank you, we appreciate you, and we congratulate you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to thank Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the opportunity to co-introduce this resolution, and I wanted to offer my own personal congratulations to Speaker McClinton. It's hard to put into words the enormous sense of pride that is felt in west and southwest Philadelphia in particular about, you know, her ascendance to the speaker position. And I know that that's a sense of pride that also extends throughout the city and the state. And everywhere I'm looking, I see, you know, people congratulating Speaker McClinton, and I can feel how much people are inspired. And I think the reason why there's been such an overjoyed reaction is because this is what it feels like when someone deserves what it is, the role and the title that they get, and there's no one more deserving of this than Speaker McClinton. She puts her whole heart into her work. She, you know, brings resources, badly-needed resources into our community, and she is a member of the community through and through. And I think we all feel so proud of her because we relate to her. And so I want to just offer my sincere congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo the sentiments in congratulating and honoring my little sister, now Madam Speaker Joanna McClinton. And it's truly significant that she not only broke a glass ceiling, but also shifted dynamics of how the body of Harrisburg, specifically the General Assembly, will operate moving forward. Being a former member of the State House of Representatives, it's critically important to be able to have a coalition across this state as relates to advocating for the issues and concerns of the state of Pennsylvania as well as the city of Philadelphia. And Joanna McClinton has shown she's a worthy and, most importantly, exceptionally qualified leader within that area, making sure that she's bringing everybody together and advancing the state of Pennsylvania. And so I know that our Philadelphia delegation chairwoman, who's sitting here as well, knows when you have elected an African-American woman to serve the State House and the state of Pennsylvania, it's truly a significant and, most importantly, a big deal. And so I just want to also put my comments on a record. I'm truly proud of the young lady that Joanna McClinton has become, just watching her grow throughout this process, from wanting to run for office to now becoming Madam Speaker in the General Assembly in the state of Pennsylvania. So I just want to personally say congratulations as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome Morgan Cephas, representative, our leader of the Philadelphia delegation, my former colleague, personally sat next to for a full term. We are so proud of you being in the majority. My only regret on Tuesday was that I wasn't a member of the General Assembly. I would have nominated Joanna McClinton, and I would have voted for her because she's going to be a tremendous leader in the House of Representatives. And colleagues here in our city council, Philadelphia will be treated with respect. Thank you, Mr. President.[1104.55][1104.55](APPLAUSE).
Awesome. Look forward to that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating champion of the week, the Julia R. Masterman Laboratory and Demonstration School Debate Team on their success in the 48th University of Pennsylvania Debate Tournament.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers eight bills and three resolutions entitled in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2024 through 2029 inclusive, also on behalf of Council President Clark, in ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2024 capital budget, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2024, in ordinance amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates, in ordinance amending Chapter 192800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority Tax on Wages and Net Profits to provide for the continuation of the tax and make other conforming changes, and in ordinance amending Chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by revising certain tax rates, and in ordinance amending, and in ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2023 from the General Fund, the Grants and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Port Royal Avenue between Henry Avenue and Old Line Road. And on behalf of Council President Clark...
Those eight bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial, Philadelphia Authority, Philadelphia Housing Authority, a deconveying fee simple titled 800 West Cumberland Street located in the fifth council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution providing for the approval of the council of the city of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the city of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2024 through 2028.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution condemning the acts of vandalism that took place at the Masjidallah Center for Human Excellence on February 24, 2023. Mr. President, Councilman Jones would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution at today's session of council.
May I get a second? It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those oppose? Ayes have it. Resolution passes. That shall be on this week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers four resolutions. A privileged resolution congratulating the Auden Reed High School Girls Basketball Team on winning the 2023 Public League Championship against Imhotep High School.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding strategies to ignite business and job growth and to make Philadelphia a more economically competitive city.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing broadcasting pioneer Patty Jackson for her induction to the Philadelphia Music Alliance Walk of Fame and congratulating Ms. Jackson for breaking new ground as the first female radio personality to be inducted to the walk.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating Shayla Smith, 15-year-old Auden Reed sophomore, for becoming the fastest girls' basketball player to score 1,000 points in public league history.
Also this week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks offers a privileged resolution recognizing the work and contributions of lifelong nurse and labor organizer Patricia Patty Ekin for who built worker power for the benefit of Philadelphia nurses and patients and whose leadership and mentorship has inspired generations of activists and leaders in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neill offers on behalf of Council President Clark a resolution authorizing and ratifying Council President Clark's appeal on behalf of and as representative of city council of the decision of the zoning board of adjustment with respect to 1451 North Broad Street.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Schweller offers four bills entitled in ordinance amending Section 91132 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Cashless Retail Prohibition by providing exemptions for airport retail establishments and gym membership fee payments, and in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Moore Street and South Sixth Street, Fernand Street and South Sixth Street, South Seventh Street and Wharton Street, Latona Street and South Twelfth Street, Ellsworth Street and South Twelfth Street, Broad Street and Dickinson Street, Annan Street and South Seventh Street, and in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Passaic Avenue to Queen Street, Queen Street and South Fifth Street, Washington Avenue to South Front Street, League Street and South Front Street, and in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Daly Street and South Eighth Street, Emily Street and South Sixth Street, McKean Street and South Sixth Street to South Ninth Street, Mifflin Street and South Seventh Street, Warnock Street and McKean Street.
Those four bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers two bills and four resolutions entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Erie Avenue and Sidenhamp Street, and in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Lawrence Street and Rockland, Lindley Avenue and North Second Street.
Those two bills refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Myra Brown for being the first African-American female to be designated to the position of board chair of Women's Way Organization, her exemplary work throughout the city of Philadelphia and leadership among women.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Philadelphia Tennis Club for being the oldest Black-owned tennis club in the country.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the 4300 block of Broad Street Prince Hall Way.
Next week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Woodland Tennis Club for being the oldest Black tennis club in the state of Pennsylvania.
This week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is report from committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules to which is referred Bill Number 220941 entitled in ordinance approving a new plan estimated costs and proposed method of assessment of charges of the City Avenue Special Services District for and concerning business improvements and administrative services to portions of the City Avenue area of the city of Philadelphia and township of Lower Marion. And Bill Number 220973 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 17th Street, Indiana Avenue, Broad Street, and Glenwood Avenue. And Bill Number 221015 entitled in ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance, Taxes, and Collections to incentivize affordable housing development by authorizing tax exemptions pursuant to the Affordable Housing Unit Tax Exemption Act. And Bill Number 230001 entitled in ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Defining and Clarifying Certain Definitions. And Bill Number 230034 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Havreford Avenue, 44th Street, Belmont Avenue, Girard Avenue, and 40th Street. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 220941, 220973, 221015, 230001, and 230034.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 220941, 220973, 221015, 23001, and 230034. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those oppose? Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a report from Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports one bill and one resolution with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Law and Government to which is referred Bill Number 230106 entitled in ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, the proposal in a resolution approved by city council amending the Philadelphia Home War Charter by establishing the office of the Chief Public Safety Director to be responsible for ensuring public safety by coordinating the resources, personnel, unemployment, property, plant, and equipment within the departments of police, prisons, recreation, and other relevant city agencies, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election. And Resolution Number 230115 entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home War Charter to establish the office of the Chief Public Safety Director of the city of Philadelphia, providing for the method of appointment of the Chief Public Safety Director and defining their powers, duties, and areas of responsibility. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill and resolution to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 230106.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 230106. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those oppose? Ayes have it. This will be placed on our first reading council. This will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Resolution Number 230115 will be placed on the final passes calendar for our next session of council. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules to have been deemed to have had their first reading, they will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Uh, as there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passes calendars today. Numbers 230040, 230071, 230072, 230135, 230136, 230138, 230139, 220244, 220736, and 220810. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Um, before considering the bills and resolutions, uh, we will have our public comment. Uh, these are the guidelines established. Um, your public comment must concern matter on the second reading and final passes calendar for possible action at today's council session. All the speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already done so, you may do so at the table outside of the chambers, um, where the sergeant-at-arms will take your name. Once you've signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet, uh, today. We will have three minutes to speak, but I ask you to please, uh, adjust your testimony to reflect that three-minute limit. In order to be fair to all the speakers, uh, we intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So when you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When that light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns thirty, yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Once those three minutes have passed, um, we will ask you to discontinue and move on for the next speaker. Uh, we also reserve the right, uh, pursuant to the rules of council, to limit repetitious comment, uh, on same subject matter. Um, Mr. Decker, if you are prepared, please call the first name on the list. Again, thank you all for be willing, willingness to participate in the public comment today and participate in seeing your government in action. Mr. Decker.
The first speaker today, Mr. President, is Vicky Ung. Commenting on Bill 220244.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I'm president of Vietnamese-American community in Philadelphia. I would like to thank the city of Philadelphia for allowing our community to display the South Vietnam flag over the past several years. This symbol, but symbolic gesture should be continued. The South Vietnam flag is identity of Vietnamese-American community. Recognizing, this can be acknowledged, the contribution and experience nearly 16,000 Vietnamese-American taxpayer, taxpayer. This is the same flag that fly high in the Vietnamese-American event throughout the Vietnamese Business District, like on the Sixth and Washington Avenue, at the Vietnam Veteran Memorial, where is the pair with the US flag and everywhere else in the city. I'm the one that treasure, that do fundraise with Vietnamese. We raised over $80,000 for that pen lending, two flag there, the Vietnamese flag and American flag, uh, right there. Besides paying a tax and being a dutiful citizen, Vietnamese-American have served in the US Army, Navy, and also the Air Force. Our Vietnamese-American people that live in this country, we honor to live here and we, uh, I think we should honor this fine Vietnamese-American servicemen and their origin by display the South Vietnam flags. Don't forget, 58,000 servicemen died in Vietnam and 1,600 are still missing in action in Vietnam. Let's raise the yellow flag at the city hall to pay the homage to the bravery and service of Vietnam, uh, Vietnam veteran and raise awareness for those who still missing. We must not forget about them. During the Vietnam War, many Vietnamese Philadelphia fight along with US servicemen. When the war ending, we all suffer. The people worked with or know American people, we be in their prison and suffer many, many year under the communist, they call re-education camp. Where they nearly star, starved to death, they were stripped, there's asset, citizen, and in, they changed the way of life. The yellow flag, this symbolize where we come from and our fight for the free society. I am survivor on Vietnam War. For those survivor, the communist risen office, officer red flag with the yellow star in the middle of elicit anger and profound sense of loss. I have hear so many, so many store about the communist abuse, which Vietnamese.
All right, ma'am. Ma'am. Ma'am, can you?
Okay.
Can you wrap it up?
So I urge you to pass the bill 220244. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Lequyn Vu. Commenting on 220244.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone. Everyone, my name is Lequyn Vu. I am the Executive Director of the Indo-Chinese American Council. I am here to offer my voice to represent all immigrants and refugee in Philadelphia. I, this bill is important because this bill was introduced as a result of the rules of how, which flag and how flag is being raised at city hall. The flag being raised at city hall for certain community in Philadelphia represent their struggle for freedom, their escape to America. Philadelphia is a city that is the birthplace of freedom. Philadelphia is a city of brotherhood, hood. So I am asking all councilmen to introduce, to pass this bill because this is the balance and it's fix the rule that was broken. You are close to the people. You live among your constituent. This is what your constituent wants, and I urge you to please vote yes for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Sergey Shaliga.
Welcome. Please, uh, state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Dear council member, dear audience, my name is Sergeuk Shaliga. I represent Belarusian-American community of Philadelphia, group Belarus Freedom Philadelphia, and nationwide organization, association of Belarusians in America. On March 25th, 1918, the Belarusian People Republic was proclaimed, and the white, red, white flag was established at the official flag of Belarus. After the fall of the Soviet Union in 1991, the same flag became the official symbol of Belarusian independence and freedom. White, red, white flag of Belarus was the flag that President Bill Clinton waved along the American flag when he visited Belarus in 1994. I will show this picture. In today's Belarus, however, this symbol of freedom is forbidden under the regime of dictator Lukashenko. The use of this flag can threaten innocent Belarusians with years in prison. The current official red, green, white flag is the former flag of the Belarusian Soviet Socialist Republic and was reestablished by the dictator Lukashenko in 1995. This flag is a painful reminder of the oppression Belarusians were subjected to during the USSR and severe human rights abuse, persecution, tyranny, and the murders of Belarusian opposition members and civil activists by Lukashenko's regime. Under this official red, green, white, red flag, Russian missiles are launched from the Belarusian territory to kill innocent Ukrainians. Therefore, I, Sergeuk Shaliga, a representative of the Belarusian-American community of Philadelphia, appealing to city council to pass Bill 220244, which would allow the city council to authorize resolution, the display of, uh, our historical Belarusian white, red, white flag. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker.
The next speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Joe Tran, commenting on 220244.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Joseph Tran. Uh, thank you. Thank you and good morning, Council President and members of the city council. My name is Joseph Tran, current student and president of the Philadelphia Student Body and Government of the Philadelphia College of Osteopathic Medicine and board and member of the Vietnamese-American Community of Pennsylvania. I am grateful for the opportunity to be speaking here before this body representing both the Vietnamese-American community of this Commonwealth and the city of Philadelphia in support of Bill Number 220244. The Vietnamese-American community are people and children of immigrants, including myself, many of whom are refugees, who have, like among many other groups throughout our nation's history, have come to call the United States our home in search of all the values all Americans hold dear, which is democracy, freedom, and opportunity. Today, there are over 2 million Vietnamese-Americans across the United States, with all, with almost 45,000 in our state and over 14,000 who reside here in the city. I'm a first-generation Vietnamese-American who is proud to call Philly my home. Having been raised and living here my entire life, I am both grateful for the opportunity that both America and the city of brotherly love has given to my family and myself. A place that gave my father, who is president of the Vietnamese-American community of Pennsylvania, the opportunity to pursue and practice medicine again, and for me to follow in his footsteps being a student at the Philadelphia College of Osteopathic Medicine, where I currently serve as student government president, representing our fine medical and graduate students. I come before you today again to ask for your support as our elected representatives to vote yes in this bill in order to codify a formal solution to recognize the Vietnamese-American heritage flag as the flag of the Vietnamese-American people and for the city to officially support this flag and its raising as a symbol for our community and its people. This flag is more than a symbol of people, of our people in diaspora. It is the embodiment of the values and struggles in the fight, in the fight and name for freedom, equality, and democracy that almost over 60,000 American troops have sacrificed and spilled their blood during the Vietnam War. Values that are shared by, by us both as Americans and as free Vietnamese people. As a country and city that prides itself in diversity, equality, and democracy, I sincerely and humbly ask that this city council simply recognize this fact for our people as one of many groups that make up our great city and great country. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Nee Vo. Commenting on 220244.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Nee Vo, and I would like to give my comment to the bill 220244. The Philadelphia flag-raising event is held as a way the city government tried to connect to various refugees or, and immigrant communities living in Philadelphia. We were very happy to come to the city to recognize our heritage. But last year, Mayor Candy borrow a directive of the State Department to forbid any flag to be raised at the city poll, flag poll, if the flag is not recognized by the US Department. My question to everyone here, if we cannot raise the flag we want, then what flag we should raise? Effectively, Mayor Candy tells us that we have to show support the US-approved flag, that is the red flag of the communist government in Vietnam. We once were political refugees, and that is the reason why we are here today and why we are being admitted into this country. Mayor Candy tells us that go to the city hall and show affection and affiliations to the Communist Party. That is an irony and does not make any sense. The city flag poll is not a federal property. The flag-raising event is not a event to honor any government delegates or any country. That event is to recognize the various community of immigrants and refugees in Philadelphia. Mayor Candy should know that his decision is deeply hurtful to our community. I would like to appeal the city council to approve this bill 220244 so we can decide how we want to represent. There is a change, not a petition, that we have more than 1,500 persons sign to support this bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Obona Hagens, commenting on 230139.
Morning. Great morning, everyone. Obona Hagens, H-A-G-I-N-S. Of course, I am in agreement with renaming the 4,900 block of Walnut Street Paul L. Robison Way. I would like to, uh, recite a quote by Paul Robison. "You want to shut up every Negro who has the courage to stand up and fight for rights of workers." And I have been on many picket lines for the steelworkers too. In some respects, at the same time that I agree with renaming the 4,900 block of Walnut Street to Paul Robison Way, I feel that the work of this body should also reflect what Paul Robison was about. Robison also said, "To be free to walk the good American earth as equal citizens, to live without fear, to enjoy the fruits of our toil, to give our children every opportunity in life." The dream which we have held so long in our hearts is today the destiny that we hold in our hands. Council, you have the ability to fulfill the works of Brother Robinson in Philadelphia by not going along to get along, to get, not, not being selfish, and by fighting and lobbying for economic repair. Other words, otherwise known as reparations, particularly in the Afro-American community, it would make an incredible difference. Unfortunately, some of your former colleagues have shown selfishness by resigning to run for mayor, essentially gutting this body and making it a lame duck council. Finally, Robison fought for civil rights for Afro-Americans. I ask you, are you fighting for the Afro-American in this city? Are you fighting for reparations for Afro-Americans in this city? Do you know that crime and violence is as a result of poverty? Alan Greenspan said that there is no debt that America cannot pay because it prints money. Pay the debt that's due to the Afro-American, and I guarantee you, you will see a reduction in the crime and violence in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210913.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis of ProtocolsForDemocracy.org. The current restriction on public comments to agenda items only is a violation of the public's First Amendment right to petition the government for a redress of grievances as well as a violation of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, which states quite clearly that city council shall provide a reasonable opportunity for taxpayers to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before the board or council prior to taking official action. According to a 2015 decision of the US District Court in Duff versus the City of Philadelphia, the main reason city council is getting away with this restriction is that they haven't actually enforced it. In the words of the court, "The court finds the plaintiff has failed to state a claim upon which relief may be granted because plaintiff has been permitted to speak on non-agenda items at city council meetings." If city council's aim is to manage public comments in a reasonable manner, city council can do that under the Sunshine Act, case law, and common sense. Clearly, the public comment period is not an opportunity for the public to talk about their favorite recipes, and it is reasonable to impose restrictions on the content of public comments for special hearings as well as during regularly scheduled city council meetings and committee meetings when discussing specific bills or resolutions, but not for the entire duration of a regularly scheduled public meeting. The Philadelphia School Board and other cities and towns do not impose this restriction on public comments for a good reason. It's an unfair suppression of our freedom to speak. In this city of liberty, it is time to end this unconstitutional restriction that has done untold damage to the public's trust and to their human right to hear what their fellow citizens have to say about their own government at city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is David Nixion, commenting on 22044. The next speaker is Vince Feldman, commenting on 220244.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Vince Feldman. I'm president of the Pennsylvania Chapter of Children's Health Defense, and I wanted to speak to a very important matter of concern that has been before this council, on this council's agenda, and that is the limiting of speech in this chamber. President Clark, let us not travel further from democracy. Your legacy of keeping the chamber shuttered to in-person meetings six months after every major municipality in the nation had reopened must be examined in this context. You cannot be a politician and also be anthropophobic. I've been told that some of the members, by a former council member of this council, enjoyed the digital intermediation that Google Meets provided because of the insulation to the public it gave, and I think that's a shame. I'm heartened to see that the galleries are now open today, and I hope other restrictions that are being made that force-
Excuse me, sir. Are you talking about the flag raising?
I'm not. I'm not.
So you're supposed to, according to your testimony, talk about flag raising?
Right. I'm talking exactly about that issue of being restricted in my speech, okay?
It has nothing to do with raising the flag.
But if you would like to stop me because I'm not speaking of that, I believe you'd be restricting my speech.
Okay. I'm just telling you, you know, hey, so once you put down that you were going to speak about-
And I would add more to Ms. Landis who-
All right. No, I hear you. I hear you. I was just saying, we had this conversation last week about people going beyond the guidelines. But go ahead, because we have the-
Yeah, but what I'm doing is I'm speaking as a grievance against that requirement that we speak to a very specific issue. This is a public forum-
That's fine, but I'm saying the guidelines in here say you have to speak until we change that guideline.
Right, but I want it-
That's fine, sir. Just go ahead and continue your speech.
Right. It's the matter of concern that is limiting the speech in this chamber, and so that I'm concerned. I'm glad, I'm heartened to see that the galleries are open today, and I hope that continues to be these restrictions being lifted because a lot of them, or most of them, are bereft of science, just being a good example. The attempts to muzzle speech must not be a part of this government. There have only been disastrous outcomes when censorship has been allowed to take root. Do not violate the Constitution of the state and the nation in a vain attempt to stifle speech in this chamber. I call in council members and the residents of this city to not support public officials who want to move away from light and towards darkness. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your speech.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, and again, thank you all for your public comment and your willingness to participate in today's council session. We will now consider the bills and the resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, if you can, please read the title of 230040.
A resolution honoring the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on the occasion of their 92nd North Atlantic Regional Conference and declaring March 9, 2023 as Alpha Kappa Alpha Day in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution Number 230040 be withdrawn.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that Resolution Number 230040 be withdrawn. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 230040 has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, read the title of Resolution Number 230071.
A resolution honoring the Philadelphia Tennis Club for being the second-oldest black-owned tennis club in the country.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution Number 230071 be withdrawn.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that Resolution Number 230071 be withdrawn. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution Number 230071 has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, 230072.
A resolution honoring the Woodford Tennis Club for being the oldest black-owned tennis club in the country.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution Number 230072 be withdrawn.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the Resolution Number 230072 withdrawn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed. 230072 has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, 230135.
A resolution also naming North 41st Street between Parkside Avenue and South Concourse Drive as Barbara Daniel Cox Way in honor of the late Barbara Daniel Cox, organizer of the Black Family Reunion.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, for those of you who knew Barbara Daniels Cox, right next to the Webster definition of a boss was her picture. She was assertive before it was fashionable for women to raise their voice. She raised her voice and always provided a guiding path for young administrators to hearken to. Her level of inspection and insistence upon perfection was second to none, and I am so very thankful to have that type of example in my life and hundreds of others that have experienced her guidance. With that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230136.
A resolution also naming the 5,900 block of Meteor Street as James Rice Way in honor of James Rice, the owner of Rice's Barbershop, which has served the Carroll Park neighborhood of Philadelphia since 1951.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 230138.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority D's conveying fee simple title to 1728 Federal Street, 1213 South Bonn Hall Street, 2114 Manton Street, 1303 South 23rd Street, and 1148 South Cleveland Street in the 2nd Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230139.
A resolution renaming the 4,900 block of Walnut Street Paul L. Robison Way in honor of the life and legacy of Paul Leroy Robison Esquire, actor, singer, athlete, lawyer, author, activist, scholar, linguist, and American hero, recognizing and honoring Philadelphia's Paul Leroy Robison on his 125th birthday and his exemplary service to the world with special acknowledgment of his leadership in civil rights, sports, and the arts.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I'd like to say a few words about it. Naming the 4,900 block of Walnut Street after Paul Leroy Robison is my immense privilege. Paul Robison is and was truly a Renaissance man. This actor, singer, athlete, lawyer, author, activist, scholar, and linguist paved the way for black artists across almost every medium. His signature song, "Old Man River," remains one of the top show tunes in American history. He shattered the glass ceiling as the first African-American to play Othello on Broadway. He became a staple of the silver screen both in Hollywood and here in Philadelphia, and this only scratches the surface of what Paul Robison achieved during his lifetime. But rather than using his success to avoid the struggles plaguing our country and our people during his lifetime, Paul Robison used his platform to stand up for oppressed communities and people, and the United States government rewarded Paul Robison for his activism by branding him a communist sympathizer and throwing him in front of the US House Un-American Activities Committee, resulting in his art becoming banned from public consumption. So today, we push back on that injustice by recognizing Paul Robison for what he truly is, an American hero whose groundbreaking legacy still inspires black children in Philadelphia and across the world 125 years after he was born. And so with that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220244.
An ordinance submitting Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Misselenus by adding a new chapter, 213300, entitled Flag Raisings, to establish uniform standards for flag-raising ceremonies.
This bill has been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 14, the nays are 0. Majority of all members present have been voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220736.
An ordinance submitting Section 211203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Appointments to Citizens Police Oversight Commission by revising prohibited activities for commissioners.
This bill has been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 14, the nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 220810.
An ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into agreements to purchase electricity, natural gas, or other mutual and motor fuel for use by the city in city facilities and vehicles, including agreements that obligate payment for delivery of such energy supplies in future fiscal years.
This bill has been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 14, the nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have additional resolution?
A resolution recognizing and supporting the accomplishments of women and girls throughout history on the occasion of Women's History Month, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating Representative Joanna E. McClinton Esquire on her historic election as the first black woman and first woman Speaker of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I enthusiastically move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in enthusiastically probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Champions of the Week, the Julia R. Masterman Laboratory and Demonstration Schools debate team on their success in the 48th University of Pennsylvania Debate Tournament, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for your support, colleagues. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And a resolution condemning the acts of vandalism that took place at the Mashtedala Center for Human Excellence on February 24, 2023, and honoring the officers of the 14th Police District for apprehending the suspect and further declaring there shall be no hate in our state, introduced today by Councilman Jones and Councilman Phillips.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
In conjunction with my colleague, Councilman Phillips, I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And a resolution congratulating the Orton Reed High School Girls Basketball Team on winning the 2023 Public League Championship against Imhotep High School, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Before Councilman Johnson makes a motion on that, I just wanted to first thank him for being the leader on that, and I just wanted to also acknowledge all of the folks who made Saturday's event a huge success. I know we have our superintendent here as well as our school board president. It was an amazing event, an amazing atmosphere. The sisters and the brothers were absolutely amazing, and I just wanted to put that on the record before Councilmember Johnson made a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I make a motion, I make a mo, I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding strategies to ignite business and job growth and to make Philadelphia a more economically competitive city, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I make a motion to move the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing broadcasting pioneer Patty Jackson for her induction to the Philadelphia Music Alliance Walk of Fame and congratulating Ms. Jackson for breaking new ground as the first female radio personality to be inducted to the walk, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman- Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
And a resolution congratulating Shayla Smith, fifteen-year-old Auden Reed sophomore, for becoming the fastest girls' basketball player to score one thousand points in public league history, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
And a resolution recognizing the work and contributions of lifelong nurse and labor organizer Patricia Patty Ekin, who built worker power for the benefit of Philadelphia nurses and patients and whose leadership and mentorship has inspired generations of activists and leaders in the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Brooks.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries.
And a resolution honoring Myra Brown for being the first African American female to be designated to the position of Board Chair of Women's Way Organization, her exemplary work throughout the city of Philadelphia and leadership among women, introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just take a brief moment before I call for the adoption of the resolution because I really wanted to make sure that people knew and understood what a very special person that Myra Brown is and all that she's done here in the city of Philadelphia for its citizens. And, you know, in the title of the resolution, we acknowledge Myra for being the Board Chair, the first African American woman Board Chair of Women's Way, which is incredibly significant. It's a huge organization that does a lot of work around women's issues and has been around for a very long time. And so for us to just have a woman of color, an African American woman, leading that organization, I think is incredibly significant. And I'm going to ask Myra to just stand if she would. And it's an organization dedicated to the advancement of women, girls, and gender and racial equity. She has also been an instrumental board member on the Board of Directors for organizations like Philly Girls Rock or Philly Girls Rock Philly, the AIDS Law Project of Philadelphia, and the Philadelphia International Airport Capacity Enhancement Project. Myra was named in two thousand nineteen Woman Up and Minority Business Leader of the Year by the Philadelphia Business Journal. And as Chief Executive of InWan Opportunities, she provides work readiness and career preparedness workshops and training to job seekers. InWan also helps businesses meet their staffing needs while businesses, while building a skilled workforce. And the one thing that's not mentioned here that really is near and dear to my heart is the work that Myra does with the Nicetown Tioga Library. And so we've had a wonderful program that Myra and I put together over at Nicetown Tioga Library to make sure that there was job readiness and skills being offered at that library two days a week. They're there all day. And they're really having an incredible impact in having folks come in, get the training, and get very high-paying jobs. And so we had hoped, Myra, stand back up. We had hoped that we would, you know, be able to have some comments. But I'm going to ask David to stand up with her. David is a young man that Myra recruited from the neighborhood who is now working with InWan and who is moving forward in his career and one of those high-paying job seekers who is now fully employed and, you know, just has a wonderful future ahead of him. And when we just give people a chance, it makes all the difference in the world. So thank you to Myra. And I am honored. I am honored to call for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Philadelphia Tennis Club for being the oldest black-owned tennis club in the country, introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Woodford Tennis Club for being the oldest black tennis club in the state of Pennsylvania, introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. It is now that time. Okay, folks. It is that time, and the time has come to consider the mayor's presentation of his annual budget. The Philadelphia Home Rule Charter states that the mayor shall submit to council no later than ninety days before the end of the fiscal year his operating budget message and propose operating budget ordinance for the ensuing fiscal year. At the same time, the mayor shall submit to council the recommended capital program and the capital budgets as received from the City Planning Commission to the extent approved by the mayor. I now appoint the following committee to escort the mayor into the council chambers, Councilman Jones, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to introduce the Mayor of the City of Philadelphia, Mayor James F. Kenny. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome back.
Thank you. It's been a while. Before I start, I want to acknowledge the presence of one of our great state representatives, Morgan Cephas. Where she, I was told she was here. There she is. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work. You really do do us proud. So thank you. I appreciate it. And really happy about our new speaker. Isn't that wonderful? So good morning, everybody. And let me begin by thanking Council President Darrell Clark and members of City Council for the invitation to speak here today. I'm happy to be back in this chamber as we kick off the annual process of creating our city's budget. The last time I gave this speech in person was March fifth, two thousand twenty. Only seventeen days later, COVID-nineteen shut down our city and changed our lives dramatically. Looking around me this morning and thinking about the uncertainty and the seismic sudden changes we have navigated together since two thousand twenty, I am overwhelmed with admiration for our city, its residents and public servants, and my fellow city leaders. We have lived and led through history. Together, we have navigated and continue to lead our city through the global pandemic, a nationwide reckoning on racial injustice and a national crisis of gun violence that is causing heartbreak and pain for too many families and communities across Philadelphia. I look forward to working with this esteemed body of elected leaders to adopt a budget that reflects our commitments to equity and progress and prioritizes sustainability and fiscal stability so that our city is ready for any changes and all the opportunities that the future holds. I also want to take this moment to recognize and thank Council President Clark, who has served in this role for the entirety of our administration and has been a valued colleague for much longer than that. Darrell and I spent a lot of time, after I was elected, envisioning what we could accomplish during our time in office. So I want to give him a round of applause. He deserves it. Things like community schools and better funding for public education, affordable housing, and new jobs. I'm so proud of what we've achieved, and thank you very much, Mr. President. Together with all our city council, we will build on our success and finish it with energy, momentum, and a strong foundation for our city's next chapter. As we begin the budget process, I want to acknowledge the months of work already completed before today. Our vision for the final budget of this administration is to make investments that provide quality services and infrastructure for residents, maintain the city's fiscal health, reduce racial disparities, and achieve equitable outcomes. We have asked city departments to ensure that their budget proposals are designed with racial equity as a guiding principle. And we have continued to improve our budget process to include more voices and more input from a diverse group of employees and residents. This budget cycle, we held fifteen community-focused groups with residents, six sessions with local organizations across many sectors, and five employee-focused groups. This process revealed that we all agree on what's important to our shared future: education, public safety, racial equity and alleviation of poverty, housing, and quality and accessible services and infrastructure. These priorities reflect our concern for each other. They are our city's values, and I couldn't be more honored to be the city's mayor. I am confident that together we can pass a budget we can all be proud of. As we entered two thousand twenty-three, I reaffirm our commitment to the priorities that have guided me since the beginning of our first term. These priorities include quality education for all, a safer and more just Philadelphia, thriving neighborhoods, and inclusive growth and economic opportunity. We have made progress in each of these areas, but there is still urgent work left to do. And this budget features new and immediate investments that will bring more opportunity, supports, and services to all Philadelphians. Seven years ago, I told City Council that together we could expand quality pre-K, create community schools, invest in our public spaces, and help small business. We took on corporate interest to pass the beverage tax. And a result, today, there are more than thirteen thousand children who have attended free quality pre-K funded by the city. And now, because of President Clark's urging, and now ten thousand students and their families are benefiting from expanded activities at community schools. We didn't stop there. From the Cato Scholarship to the PHL Connected, we prioritized education during our second term as well. Providing our children with high-quality services and opportunities from infancy to adulthood is still the absolute best thing that we can do for them and for our city. We have made a star commitments to public education over the last two terms, totaling over one point six eight billion dollars in new revenue. Our partnership has helped the school district establish new fiscal stability. They've achieved an investment-grade bond rating, and their projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year is an impressive five hundred and ninety-one million. Different from the old days when I first was in council. This year, we will follow through on our commitments to fund public schools and invest one point four billion dollars in the school district over the life of the five-year plan, in addition to the local tax revenues that support the district. Our proposed budget for FY twenty-four includes two hundred and eighty-two million dollar contribution to the district. That's a hundred and seventy-one percent higher than it was the year before my first term. By two thousand twenty budget address, I announced our plans to create a city scholarship for the Community College of Philadelphia. And despite the financial uncertainty brought on by the pandemic, we followed through and established the Octavius Cato Scholarship that year. To date, over fourteen hundred Cato scholars have received tuition-free enrollment, funds for basic needs, and wraparound support services. I am proud that we held firm on this commitment because this program has been vital for many students' recovery from the pandemic and their plans for the future. Here are just a few stories. Tabitha Biwater holds full-time, works full-time in the Jefferson Health Radiology Department while raising twins. She is a Cato scholar studying healthcare so she can advance in her field. Tabitha says, quote, "This scholarship has given me the opportunity to finally be able to reach the goals I have not only set for myself but for my growing family. Thank you for granting me this wonderful opportunity, and thank you for being just as invested in my future as I am." Norma Nicholas is a forty-year-old Cato scholar and an immigrant to the U.S. She says the scholarship has given her the opportunity to show her children that anything is possible. She earned her GED last year and is studying healthcare and hopes of becoming a nurse. She says, quote, "I am going to take advantage of this chance to be a good role model for my family, to work hard and to fulfill my potential." Another scholar, Christina San, is her parents' oldest child, and she says it felt like, quote, "A million bucks" when she told them she would go to, she could go to college for free. The scholarship turned her dream of getting a debt-free college education into a tangible reality. Christina is here today. Christina, thank you for sharing your story. We are all incredibly proud of you and your classmates. Could you please stand? Hearing these stories makes me feel like a million bucks. The Cato Scholarship makes dreams possible, not just for individual students but for their families as well. To meet the increasing demand for this anti-poverty initiative and prepare more Philadelphians for the academic and professionals she says they dream of, the proposed budget will dedicate eleven point six million dollars to Cato scholarships in FY twenty-four. We will also invest a total of more than two hundred and seventy million dollars in our city's community college through FY twenty-eight to ensure this vital institution remains accessible and affordable while offering the quality educational opportunities that Philadelphia's need for post-secondary success. And for our youngest learners, this year's budget will create nine hundred and fifty new PHL pre-K seats in FY twenty-four, bringing the program's size to five thousand two hundred and fifty seats total. That's over five thousand children. It's more than the number of freshman students at Temple attending. City funded pre-K each year. I'm extremely proud of what this program has accomplished in just six years, serving more than thirteen thousand children, funding diverse neighborhood businesses, expanding the number of quality pre-K seats citywide, and creating opportunities for caregivers to find employment, work additional hours to save for their families, or even go to school themselves. Most importantly, it's giving children the quality early education that they surely deserve, which prepares them for early literacy and academic success. When we make investments in education, especially in the youngest learners, we're investing in a process that takes longer than an election cycle to prove its full potential. But the wait is worth it. We recently heard from one of our first PHL pre-K families. Diana's son Mason attended pre-K at Prodigy Learning Center, which is one of the first pre-K centers we partnered with when PHL pre-K started in two thousand seventeen. The PHL pre-K program allowed Diana to send her youngest son to pre-K center she trusted without worrying about the financial burden of his tuition. Because Mason was enrolled in a safe and enriching environment during the day, Diana was able to earn her bachelor's degree in two thousand seventeen and her MBA in two thousand eighteen. She also earned a Master of Education in two thousand twenty and now works with the Defender Association of Philadelphia. Today, Mason's in the fourth grade and earning outstanding grades, which his mom credits to his excellent pre-K experience. Diana also thanks the PHL pre-K program for supporting Mason to grow emotionally and facilitating a strong partnership between her and her son's teachers. This is the incredible story of just one pre-K family. With the expansion proposed in this budget, more than eighteen thousand children will have attended PHL pre-K by the end of our term. This is an extraordinary accomplishment for our city. Establishing and expanding this program is the highlight of my career, and I look forward to its continued success in the years to come. While we continue to invest in places of learning, it is just as important that we invest in the places where our residents live. Rebuild is a historic investment in public spaces, transforming rec. centers, libraries, and playgrounds that have languished for far too long. With the program now in high gear, we are committing forty-seven point five million dollars of combined new borrowing and operational support for rebuild in FY twenty-four. This will help us reach our goal of eighty percent of low-income households living within a mile of a recently renovated public space by the end of the calendar year. We have over twenty groundbreaking, 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 at least fifteen ribbon cuttings planned in two thousand twenty-three. And let me be clear, because I think there is some confusion in the press. We have doubled down on our commitment to rebuild, even in the face of the sector-wide cost increases. We are dedicating all the dollars needed to bring seventy-two sites to a world-class standards that we and the city council have promised our communities. And we remain dedicated to working with community members to ensure that their vision is reflected in every project. Rebuild is a win-win program that transforms lives as well as facilities by offering support and opportunities for underrepresented business and workers. The construction projects have a minority in women-owned business participation rate of more than sixty-five percent. And we will make sure those spaces are consistently available to the public by committing fourteen million dollars over five years to make sure every library branch has the staff it needs to provide residents with dependable five-day service, with an additional thirty-seven million dollars committed to expanding service at all branches back to six days per week. Just last weekend, we hit an important milestone as ten neighbors. Just last weekend, we hit an important milestone as 10 neighborhood branches reopen for Saturday service. With new funds from the budget we passed together last year, I am so proud that our Parks and Rec team has been able to open 66 recreation centers on the weekends, with all rec. centers being open on the weekends by the end of 2023. And in this budget, we have added another $1.7 million in Parks and Rec Inclusion Plan, which ensures that facilities are more accessible and welcoming to everyone, including individuals with disabilities. We will also sustain our investments in arts and culture, which over seven years has funded 700 free, family-friendly cultural events in Philadelphia neighborhoods prioritizing low-income zip codes. We are proud of the number of public art projects in neighborhoods and the increased diversity and the stories being told through public art. We also look forward to working with council to support the African-American Museum in Philadelphia as they prepare to move to 18th Vine, where they belong. I am very excited for their incredible collection and programs to join our other iconic institutions along the Parkway. This is important. It's really important. I am pleased, I am pleased that our continued focus on reliable city services is working. Our on-time trash pickup is at the highest consistent rate in almost a decade. And in 2022, the new street sweeping program cleaned more than 16,000 miles of street, a distance equivalent to traveling 2/3 around the way of the globe. The program also removed almost 800 tons of debris in high-needs neighborhoods across the city. In this budget, we are making new investments in sanitation services, including a $2.5 million investment to expand street sweeping and $4 million for the creation of another crew to address the challenges presented by illegal dumping in neighborhoods across the And I want to introduce some of the newest members of the Streets Department who are here with us today. Our first cohort of public safety enforcement officers started with the city on Monday. They are the first civilian city employees to provide official support for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. You will see them working during peak traffic times to address congestion, promote safety, and help our residents and visitors travel the city more easily. It takes dedicated, skilled people to deliver the services I've mentioned and reach the goals that we have set through the budget process. And just like many other employees, employers, one of the greatest challenges we faced after the pandemic is hiring and retaining workers. To make sure we are doing all we can to help departments hire the workers they need, the FY24 budget will provide an additional $1.9 million to the Office of Human Services to support improvements to the way we recruit and hire. I want to thank city council for the support with this urgent issue facing the city, which includes creating a special committee on retention and recruitment of municipal workers. As this group convenes and as we work together to pass a budget, we will make sure we are prioritizing the needs of city workers, current and future. Our first goal with this work will be to ensure that the lowest-paid city workers are paid enough to sustain their families' needs. We've also made commitments in this budget to fund our labor agreements. Public service does not need to be a sacrifice. All workers should be able to live here comfortably with benefits that support them and their families. While poverty in Philadelphia is at a 15-year low, we know that economic hardship and the overall cost of living are urgent challenges for far too many residents citywide. One way we are addressing this is advancing our commitment to racial equity, is the establishing a $5 million fund in FY24 to clear criminal justice-related debts that create barriers to employment and opportunity. We want to support, not penalize, people who are taking the right steps to keep their lives on track. The five-year plan will also expand on our collective commitment to affordable housing, housing stability, and housing opportunities for people experiencing homelessness. We are investing $29 million over five years into eviction prevention, including expanding the Right of Counsel program, which guarantees free legal assistance with eviction proceedings for low-income residents in the zip codes most affected by evictions. We all agree that any homelessness is too much homelessness, and I'm glad to report that our Housing First approach in Philadelphia is making significant strides. The city's homeless prevention and rapid rehousing efforts have reduced homelessness by 22% in the last five years, and family homelessness has been reduced by an incredible 42%. Our office won't, our efforts won't end there. We are investing $6.7 million over five years to create 100 new supportive housing units for people who are chronically homeless. And we know that this model is 90% successful in preventing a return to homelessness. We are also committing $3.2 million over five years to operate Sanctuary Village, which will be Philadelphia's first tiny home community. We are, and we are committed to sustaining the Kensington-focused encampment resolution team, which makes daily contact with people experiencing homelessness, offers connections to treatment, housing, and services, and responds to neighborhood concerns. Thanks to funding for the National Opioid Settlement, we are investing in community-driven planning and solutions in Kensington. We're also using, using the funds to address the overdose crisis with expanded outreach and engagement and reduce barriers to treatment through mobile supports. Ensuring thriving neighborhoods across the city also requires us to plan ahead and invest now to prepare for a warmer and wetter climate. To that end, FY24 budget includes $20 million of new borrowing and operating support for the planned transformation of FDR Park, which is the first park plan in Philadelphia's history to incorporate climate change projections. FDR Park is a welcoming space for diverse and underserved communities and a sanctuary for local wildlife. The plan will address frequent and future flooding so that this historic park is accessible and preserved for generations to come. We know that climate change presents an elevated threat to communities of color in Philadelphia, and this is in part due to the centuries of systemic racism that have shaped our city's neighborhoods and infrastructure. To confront this, last year, we established the Philadelphia Environmental Justice Advisory Commission to engage residents in the process of fixing historic injustices and building resiliency for the future. The five-year plan will provide $1 million over five years to fund the commission and provide direct funding to communities working to address this goal. The FY24 budget also includes $22 million across 12 departments to maximize the historic opportunity presented by the federal bipartisan infrastructure law, which is already yielding results and bringing transformative opportunities to Philadelphia communities. To date, the city has won more than $136 million in five major competitive VIL grants, in addition to the $450 million expected in Surface Transportation Formula funds. While we make plans for our city's future, we are ever mindful of the urgent crises facing us today. The challenges of the pandemic have precipitated an alarming rise in gun violence across the nation and here in Philadelphia as well. I know that ending this crisis is an urgent and personal priority for every elected official in this room, and there is no higher priority for our administration. Public safety is a precondition for every single one of our goals. Last year, we announced a record investment in gun violence with your help, and this year's $233 million budget will keep up the momentum as we roll out this year's public safety and criminal justice investment. This includes $50 million for a new forensic lab and another $14.7 million over five years for new forensic specialists. We are also committing $9.2 million over five years to Operation Pinpoint, which deploys additional police resources to the places where violent crimes occur the most. Operation Pinpoint carried out a significant redeployment in four areas across the city at the end of 2022. We know, we know hiring is crucial to our success here, and the five-year plan invests $1 million in recruitment for the police department with a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. In FY24, we will work to further reduce shootings by continuing to partner with the Civic Coalition to save lives. And I am pleased to announce the latest development in this partnership, which is, which is that we will soon welcome Estelle Richmond as the Managing Director, Senior Advisor for Gun Violence Intervention. Drawing on her years of public leadership and service to the city and state, Estelle will work closely with the dedicated teams of city staff and community leaders who are working at this very, working at this very day. Together, we will continue to expand ongoing efforts to intervene with individuals at the very highest risk of being involved in gun violence and strengthen the coordination to keep these individuals alive. One of the key proposals in this effort is the Group Violent Intervention, or GVI. Early this week, we shared a promising evaluation of this nationally-recognized model, which lowered the average rate of, rate of weekly shootings by up to 50% among participating groups here in Philadelphia. We are making new investments in the program with this budget by allocating an additional $1.4 million in stipends to encourage participation. And we are investing in a youth leader program run by the Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations, which will bring conflict resolution, resolution training to high school students. We will continue to partner with the school district to prioritize student safety so children feel safe and welcome in places of learning, show up every day, and access all the services and academic, academic opportunities that their schools offer. Our collective attention to this crisis is making a difference. I am grateful for the support of city council, our police officers, and partners in public safety, and the many departments and agencies working around the clock to prevent violent crime through proven interventions and community investment. Their work is literally saving lives. They know and I know that we can't move fast enough on this issue, so we will continue to invest in the strategies that are working to accelerate their impact. And we will continue to call on some state legislators to help us address the reckless availability of firearms in our city. It is unacceptable for lawmakers in Harrisburg to keep us from saving the lives of our own residents. The common denominator in every fatal shooting is a weapon, and we need to be able to adopt gun policies that are saving lives in other states and other cities. With every challenge that we face together, I remain confident that the city will prevail. Looking back on our recovery from the pandemic, I am more optimistic than ever about Philadelphia's growth and the opportunities we can create for our residents and future generations. Three years ago, our city came to a standstill, and this government pivoted to address an unprecedented crisis affected, affecting every single person in Philadelphia. We knew our city's resilience would see us through, but we didn't know when. Today, children are back in school, center cities come back as national news, airport travel is up more than 25% compared to last year, and new businesses are opening, arriving, and expanding here with the same pluck and innovation that our city has known since its Last year, we announced that Chubb, one of the world's largest insurance companies, will build and open a new Philadelphia office in 2026, creating the company's largest office in North America, as well as 1,250 new jobs. Philadelphia will have yet another chance to shine on the world stage as the 2026 World Cup host city. These opportunities are a testament to the work that we have done to support business, startups, and commercial corridors while fostering equity and inclusion. Philadelphia is a world-class city, and everyone is welcome to live, work, and play here. This budget will sustain our commitments to inclusive growth by further lowering business and wage taxes, which are already the lowest they've been in decades. We are also continuing to support the Quality Jobs Initiative program, which will provide grants to businesses that create new quality jobs accessible to all Philadelphians. I think we can all agree that an accessible, safe, and reliable transit system is essential to growth and equity in any major city. Our budget includes two major investments that will reduce the burden of transit costs on Philadelphia families and promote SEPTA ridership. By bringing more riders into the system, we can build an even stronger, faster, and safer system for everyone and reduce emissions in our region. Over the next two years, we will commit $62 million to pilot a zero fare, fare transit program that will serve at least 25,000 Philadelphia residents who are near or below the poverty line. This means, this means much more than a free trip. In a recent community needs assessment, 39% of residents in poverty cited transportation as their biggest obstacle to finding and sustaining employment. The Zero Fare Transit Program will make it easier for low-income residents to get to work and access all of our opportunities that our city has to offer. In addition, the city will invest $9 million per year to join other large employers in the region, participating in the SEPTA Key Advantage Program. Working with our labor partners, we will provide free transit to all city employees. This two-year project, this two-year pilot is an opportunity to boost the city's hiring and retention efforts and aligns with our goals of sustainability, traffic safety, and equity as well. SEPTA's system is rebuilding ridership back to pre-pandemic levels, and we are optimistic that these investments will help the agency sustain and improve the critical services that so many Philadelphians rely on. While Philadelphia's economy is on a good path, we know that global factors are driving fluctuations beyond our immediate control. The five-year plan takes into account the impact of inflation, not just on households but also on operating departments, and we will remain committed to the city's financial health as a whole. I am very proud that the city now holds its highest bond rating in 40 years, thanks to our success in strengthening the pension fund and rebuilding our reserves. This really matters because we want to be prepared for every challenge and opportunity, whether it's an economic downturn or a moment where we can set, step up to what's right in a crisis. On that note, I want to recognize all the partners and departments that welcomed buses of asylum seekers over the course of several weeks. We work with nonprofit partners to stand up a welcoming center to receive 838 tired travelers, including children looking for a better life and a safe home. Last month, Welcoming America made it official. We are a certified welcoming city. I am proud of the efforts led by our Office of Immigrant Affairs and the departments and agencies we work with to make sure that everyone feels a sense of belonging here in Philadelphia. I know that our welcoming values will only further our city's success, and we'll always step up when leadership as a city, when our leadership as a city is needed. I will end with this. The first day of PHL pre-K program was a very cold day in January of 2017. I remember it was cold because I remember the tiny coats the students all wore on their way to school. That was more than six years ago. A three-year-old student who started the program that day is nine years old today. Like Diana Sun-Mason, they gained skills in pre-K that have benefited them throughout elementary school. They will be in middle school when the 2026 World Cup arrives in Philadelphia. They will likely start college nine years from now in 2032. It is my hope that they will choose a rewarding career and a home for their family here in their own hometown. I hope that decades from now, their family can go for walks in FDR Park, where the bold investments we make in FY24 will have protected this one-of-a-kind natural refuge from flooding and improved access for everyone. And they will meet their friends at a local rec. center, where rebuilds renovations this year have transformed the facility for future generations to enjoy. I hope that they will feel safe and healthy regardless of where they live, thanks to our investments in violence prevention and environmental justice. And I know they will enjoy even more commercial, cultural, educational, and professional opportunities because of our investments in equitable growth and because we've worked with SEPTA to make all areas of the city more connected and more accessible never. And when their mayor stands in front of city council, or if they're the mayor themselves, don't, don't think, don't think it doesn't cross my mind every time I visit a pre-K. I hope that our investments in growth and opportunity, paired with sound financial practices, have positioned the city's finances, stability, and prosperity to a point where the services and infrastructure we provide reflect our city's highest ambitions. I have always approached this role with the years beyond this administration in mind, with faith in the power of education, faith in incredible potential of our residents, and faith in the innovative, resilient, caring, and optimistic character of our city. And I am dedicated each day of the remainder of our term to a brighter, safer, more sustainable future for the city, just as I have, just as I have each day since 2016. It is an incredible honor to serve the city and to be part of its progress. It is also an honor to work alongside city council as dedicated to services as each of you. So thank you. We need to get to work, and I want to, I want to just say to all of you, I learned a lot in this chamber. I was taught a lot. I grew up a lot. I matured a lot. I had people like Gussie Clark, Marion Tasco, and J.D. Blackwell, who brought me along, this kid from South Philly, and taught me how to represent the entire city. And I just want to thank all of you for your dedication and your hard work, and this is my last budget address. I wish you all well, and God bless you.
Okay. We have one last item we have to resolve, so if we can ask for a little quiet. Thank you. And I want to thank the mayor for his last budget message, and we will start our budget process shortly. At this time, we will move to our speeches. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. I just had to clarify an announcement regarding our withdrawal of the AKA Resolution, where they are celebrating their anniversary next week. That resolution will be reintroduced next Thursday during their conference. So I just wanted to clarify that just for all the listening audience and those who are watching, that the AKA Resolution celebrating their anniversary will be introduced next Thursday. Also, on next Wednesday, March the 8th, we will be announcing the Smokin' Joe Frazier Day in the city of Philadelphia that's going to take place at 3:00 p.m. outside of the Joe Frazier statue in South Philadelphia at Xfinity Live, 1100 Patterson Avenue. And again, on March the 8th of 2023, we will be declaring Smokin' Joe Frazier Day in the city of Philadelphia in the memory of the fight of the century when he beat Muhammad Ali. And so that's going to take place at Xfinity Live at 3:00 p.m., located at 1100 Patterson Avenue, and all those who would like to attend are more than welcome as we honor a true, outstanding Philadelphian. Thank you, Council President.
Awesome. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was good hearing the budget address and knowing all of the work that was put into this budget by members of council, things they advocated for, things they fought for, and it was good to see it manifested in a document called the budget. My staff is delivering, at this point, a budget care package, and in that budget care package is a Snickers bar, some healthy granola kind of substance, water, because we have work to do, and we're going to spend a lot of hours in here making that budget document a real, living document. I know all of us have a lot of work to do this year in particular, but we are going to spend a lot of time in this. To that end, I'd like to encourage members and staff to join me in visiting some of these facilities. One-third of our budget is public safety, police, fire, prisons, courts, and it's difficult to, in a half-hour budget presentation, really digest all of the aspects of a department. So starting tomorrow, we're going to take our first road trip domestic, not like yours in different cities, Mr. President, but we'll be up at the police training facility. And former member O talked about non-lethal training. It's important that we kick the tires, see what they do, see what they can do better. Councilman Johnson introduced the no-choke hold legislation that passed, but see how that is being trained, implemented, and included in their training. In addition, we will be dealing with simulators to look at real-life scenarios when people get stopped by cars, real-life scenarios when, you know, they have to make a split-second decision about whether to use lethal force. So I encourage us, those who can make it, to come up. We're leaving tomorrow. We're going to take that ride, but if you cannot go, send someone in your staff that is dedicated to analyzing those particular departments within the budget. And enjoy your survival, budget survival kit, and we put Snickers in there so that during the process, none of the members get hangry. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President, and many thanks to Mayor Kenny for joining us today. I am excited by what we just heard, and I'm very excited to continue working with council and with the mayor and his team on a budget that centers racial equity across every part of the city. Even though this budget marks the end of our legislative term, I know that none of us intend to slow down because our constituents cannot wait another year for a budget that takes Philadelphia boldly out of the pandemic and into a more equitable future. I'm proud that over the past two fiscal years, we've doubled down on our efforts to fund an urgent, targeted, and trauma-informed response to the gun violence epidemic, but I also know that we have a long way to go before we restore peace to our streets. That's why I look forward to once again banding together as a council to invest in grassroots violence prevention programs, paying special attention to redirecting youth at risk of or already involved in gun violence. And as part of our anti-violence strategy, we must also ensure that all residents, no matter if they call Center City or Mill Creek Home, receive reliable municipal services proven to reduce crime. I'm proud that last year, my Just Services PHL campaign successfully won an additional $30 million above the proposed budget for the equitable provision of city services. However, my conversations with city agencies and constituents confirms that $30 million barely scratches the surface of what it will take to give every resident their fair share. That's why I'm bringing Just Services PHL back and expanding to housing-related services as well. According to the Office of Homeless Services, 70% of the residents they served in fiscal year 2022 entered their system for the very first time. Frankly, this does not surprise me because a study my office completed pre-pandemic found that Philadelphia's rent gap pre-pandemic was $75 million per month. As I speak, constituents facing homelessness are desperately calling government agencies and nonprofits in search of rental assistance or supportive housing, but many of them will get the same apologetic answer: "We're out of money, and you have to try somewhere else." The 100 new supportive housing units proposed by the mayor is an excellent start, but City Council can go further by shoring up OHS's emergency rental assistance budget, as well as by funding additional case managers so the city can help our neighbors experiencing homelessness get back on their feet. We cannot ignore the need of families forced to make the impossible choice between homelessness and living in a home that could collapse at any time thanks to the neglect of absentee landlords. And that's why I want to allocate funds to help residents displaced due to unsafe conditions find a new home, rather than ending up on OHS's doorstep. And to further prevent evictions, we must ensure our nationally-acclaimed eviction diversion program has a budget it needs to help every tenant at risk of eviction stay in their home and support the mayor's plan to expand right to council. We must also protect vulnerable neighbors long before they make it to the eviction stage. For instance, the city must do more to preserve our affordable housing stock. Frankly, inaction isn't an option because more than 5,400 affordable housing units could disappear across the city within the next five years, and 900 of those are in my district alone. So let's couple our work on housing and security with a renewed effort to solve this crisis at one of its roots: poverty. And I can think of a few better ways to accomplish this challenging feat than by investing in workforce development. The life sciences sector is booming in Philadelphia, and nowhere is this growth more visible than in the areas of West and Southwest Philly that I represent. In the past month alone, I've been to groundbreaking ceremonies for over 1 million square feet of life sciences developments, and I could not be more excited because the life sciences generates high-paying jobs for residents from all educational backgrounds. But it's up to our body to fund high-quality workforce development programs that prepare working-class residents to be competitive applicants for these jobs before they even come online. And we must start now if we want to make sure the life sciences industry grows alongside, rather than without, our communities. It's been the mission of this city council to lead Philadelphia into a more community-minded and equitable future. Philadelphia is counting on us to keep going, and I intend to deliver. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Harity.
Yes, Council President. I just wanted to commend Mayor Kenny and his administration on his efforts to help the normal citizen. I believe that with SNAP benefits being cut by $95 a month to our most vulnerable citizens, I believe that his program for SEPTA will help greatly in kind of eating that out. So, you know, while we criticize him on occasion, I just have to commend him for his commitment to the safety of the citizens of Philadelphia with his investment in law enforcement, and I look forward to actually seeing the budget incompleteness. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That appears to conclude the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. And with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 9, 2023 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's moved, second to the council's stand adjourned until Thursday, March 9, 2023, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Please be safe.